We are ready, thank you.
Okay, so it is 7:22, reporting out from closed session. The City Council met to discuss employee evaluation. Uh, evaluation was discussed, a direction was provided. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the closed session at 7:22. So let me know when we're ready for me to open the successor agency.
You can go ahead.
Okay, at this time I will call to order the succession agency for the City of Emeryville. It is 7:23. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bouters?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue? Councilmember Donahue? Okay, I'll skip him for now. Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Here.
And Mayor Pats?
I am here.
Okay, uh, roll, uh, so can I have a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
Yes.
And I will second it, so you have a motion from Member Medina and a second from me. Vote, please.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue, are you on the call? Okay, Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay. With that, it's passed. Uh, the ex parte communications, again, I'm not expecting any, so just shout out if you have any. Member Medina, will I get a motion for you to approve the consent calendar?
Yep, you can, sir.
And I will second it, and so if we have a vote on the consent calendar, please?
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Oh, good. Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
I will say aye. And with that, it's 7:24, we are adjourned.
Mr. Mayor?
What? Yeah?
I don't believe we called for public comment at that meeting.
Oh, I am sorry, you are correct. I will, uh, call for it and we'll take it on this next meeting.
I have no comments that have been received.
Are you ready for me to start the next meeting?
One moment, please.
All right.
Okay, yes.
Before I do, I do not see you having me read the COVID announcement, so I'm gonna skip that unless you tell me to add again.
No, I'm sorry, you should read that.
Okay, so I thought I should. All right, at this time, it is 7:26 on May 5th. Happy Cinco de Mayo. I'm gonna call to order the regular City Council meeting. And before we take roll call, I want to read the introductory remarks. "I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for one of the Governor's executive order in response to COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health crisis, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting as being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27. They provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville webpage, www.emeryville.org, and submitting and clicking a on the council agendas video, once there will be a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card." And with that, we'll go to roll call votes, please.
Councilmember Bouters?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Here.
And Mayor Pats?
I am here. Okay, we are, we have no special orders of the day. I am not doing proclamations, but I do want to acknowledge that it is affordable. Housing week, which is all the more prescient, given our current situation. Housing is the single most important thing right now. Um, but I don't want to spend any time on that because we are not doing special, uh, orders of the day. Announcement on commission or committee vacancy, city clerk.
Um, just to repeat the previous announcement, that we are currently in a recruitment for members to fill expired terms. Those applications that can be filled out online are due by May 25th. And we will, uh, council will appoint those positions at its second June meeting. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Next is council member special announcements, reports on meetings attended. And I'm going to start with Member Donahue this week. So, Member Donahue, do you have any special announcements? Go ahead.
No, nothing to report.
Member Medina?
Um, yeah, I was on the East Bay EDA call with the Department of Public Health. I don't think of any updates you guys have been gotten. At this point, it's outdated. But, you know, wanna shout out to our public health officials in Alameda County. They're doing a fantastic job and really working to make sure cities and counties know exactly what the protocol should be to keep us safe.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, Member Bouters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to report that, uh, this month, the Alameda County Transportation Commission will be holding a number of very big, uh, hearing items, uh, at our general meeting at the end of the month. Uh, on Valley Link, on the capital improvement plan for the next two years. Um, but one item of local interest is, for the last couple of years, I've been working with staff to create a new program of funding at ACTC for small cities. Um, and the proposed policy change that will be voted on by the commission later this month would essentially waive the local match requirement for projects from the three smallest cities in the county. Um, so whereas we previously had to put up our own money for transportation projects as match in order to draw down county and state funds, um, that obligation would be waived and the county would be picking up 100% of the bill for projects we have shovel-ready. Um, so I'm very excited about that. That will, especially during, um, the upcoming future for fiscal issues. That will be a huge game changer for us on delivering projects if we eliminate the 20% to 30% match requirement. So I'm just reporting that that will happen later this month, hopefully.
Excellent, thank you. Um, Vice Mayor?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay. Um, I've had the usual state of calls with the local mayor's county office. As Member Medina so eloquently said, nothing new. Um, it's hard to remember when they are. Uh, but I did speak, I was on a call with the mayor's, uh, Alameda County, or, I'm sorry, the mayor's of Congressperson Barbara Lee's district, um, as they were voting, which was really kind of nice to hear from her. And she is checking in on us and working on making sure that any stimulus that are passed will be, uh, will get to both California, but also, more importantly, to the smaller cities in her district. Uh, with that, we will move to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Um, ex parte communications, we'll start with you, Member Donahue.
Uh, I met with, uh, uh, a member of the AC Transit Board, Greg Harper, about the, uh, public hearing. 11.1.
11.1. Okay, thank you. Member Medina?
Hmm, I received several comments from the public about item 12.2, including some in-person conversations on the street and appropriate social distance. Um, I also discussed 12.1 with a few local business owners.
Great, thank you. Uh, Member Bouters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 11.1, I received an email from Nicolee Collins and John Schmidt, separate emails. On item 12.1, I've had conversations with Doug Smith from Rudy's Can't Fail Cafe, Anna Nikateris from the Bank Club, and Keisha Johnson from Rob Ben's. On item 12.2, uh, similar to Councilmember Medina, I've had conversations with a number of members of the public along the Greenway about the implementation modifications to Doyle Street. And on item 12.3, I have had, um, conversations with workers at the Pack and Save, the Trader Joe's, the Target in Emeryville, um, as well as Jim Araby from UFCW Local 5.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Martinez?
I received some emails on item 11.1, and I'm, uh, it looks like they're, they've been recorded by city clerk's office as late correspondence already.
Excellent. I've had some of the same emails and a couple of conversations with local employees as well. And so on the, uh, what is that, 12.3? Okay, um, sorry, I scrolled ahead to find 12.3. That brings us to public comments, and now is the time for public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, and if so, to read them aloud. I will pause for delay. City clerk?
I have received no comments.
Excellent. Okay. Um, that brings us to the consent items. Um, can I have a motion for consent?
Stand there. I move. I am second.
I have a motion from Member Medina and a second from Member Donahue. Roll call votes, please.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay. Uh, consent calendar passed, and that brings us to item 11.1. A public hearing in, in accordance with Chapter 4, Title 7 of the municipal code regarding the undergrounding of utilities. Um, do we have a staff report?
Yes, this is Mike Roberts. I'm here to report.
Excellent, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Um, I'm here to report to you, uh, the public hearing, uh, information to consider the formation of the North Hollis Underground Utility District. Um, some background information is that, uh, you know, the California Public Utilities Commission, uh, Rule 20A program allocates PG&E ratepayer work credits to cities for use in eligible undergrounding projects. Uh, the City of Emeryville is considered inactive at this current point in time, uh, as far as a Rule 20 agency, until a, uh, eligible underground district is formed by council resolution. Um, at this point in time, the, uh, City of Emeryville Rule 20 work credit balance is $939,000. However, PG&E has informed city staff that due to Emeryville's inactive status, .48% of these funds will be reallocated to the City of Live Oak. And, uh, it's uncertain if further, uh, reallocations will occur in the future if we do not become active. So, um, we've put together a very short, uh, three-slide PowerPoint presentation. Uh, Sherry, are you able to put that up?
Uh, one moment, please. Okay, it should be up now.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so just the cover slide. Uh, we're, we're here to discuss the formation of the North Hollis Utility Undergrounding District. Uh, next slide, slide, please. Um, this slide indicates the boundary map of the proposed underground district, um, beginning at the northern city wall on Hollis and, uh, continuing to approximately 45 feet south of 59th Street. Now, this isn't going to include the previously undergrounded portion of Hollis, uh, along the Hollis frontage of the Glass House and Courtyards, um, projects, because those are, have been previously undergrounded. Um, and then we're also talking about, uh, 61st and 62nd Streets along the frontage of the Doyle Hollis Park between Doyle and Hollis Streets.
Uh, next slide, please?
Okay, um, so for clarification, uh, the creation of the North Hollis Utility Underground District is a necessary administrative step that will preserve existing and future CPUC Rule 20A work credit allocations. Um, creation of this, uh, North Hollis Underground Utility District does not form or initiate, uh, the formation of a Underground Utility Assessment District, and there's no current plan to do so. So this, uh, this point is especially, uh, relevant to the two, uh, letters, uh, placeworks received from Nicolee Collins and John Schmidt. They were especially concerned that we weren't revisiting a previous attempt to create an assessment district along the Hollis corridor and some additional streets. Um, that's, that's not what this effort is. That, that effort occurred back in 2011. Um, and it became unpopular and did not move forward. So, um, and then last, last point here is that, uh, the project planning and design effort won't begin until the project is fully funded. There's quite a big gap in the budget that needs to be patiently waited for with Rule 20A funding or some other funding source. So that, uh, concludes my presentation. Um, open for any questions?
Thank you. Um, Member Donahue, any questions?
Yes, uh, so the, the funding, uh, I noticed that the total cost was about $14 million. And we'd be getting a little bit less than a million from the, uh, 20A fund. What, where would the monies come from? Would they come from our general, uh, I mean, our capital fund? Or we, is this just to initiate the process and see if we can get funds elsewhere? How would you describe this?
This, really, it's bullet point one here, where we're, we're just trying to protect our existing balance. Uh, a little bit has been taken already. We know that there are, um, perhaps plans to change, uh, some of the rules related to 20A work credits. So, um, this is kind of, uh, forming the district. Um, it doesn't need immediate action as far as, uh, development of the project. Um, where those funds would come would likely be 20A, uh, in a $40,000 a year trickle or some other funding source. But, um, there isn't really an intent to move forward with this, uh, at this point in time, as far as developing the project.
Thank you. Any other questions, Member Donahue?
That's it for right now.
Okay, Member Medina?
No questions.
Member Bouters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question. What is the total amount of money that we have lost as a result of not having this district in place already?
Um, it is roughly $4,500.
$4,500, okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mike, for a, a quick report and, uh, three slides. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. I'm good on my questions as well. So at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. It is 7:42. And I will see the city clerk if we have any comment on this.
I have received one that I received actually a little bit previous, so I'll read that now while we wait for other folks to make theirs if they have them.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, this came from Greg Harper. "Unless for some reason there is a great urgency on this issue, I suggest that the item be continued for a later meeting so the council members can review the resolution that was offered at the last annual League of California Cities Conference in Long Beach last October. It asks that Rule 20A money be reallocated to very high fire hazard severity zones and was supported by the City of Berkeley and many other cities. This resolution served a very good purpose, served a very good purpose. As it now reads, 'The limited purpose of Rule 20A is for the beautification of urban areas,' which seemed laudable enough in 1967. However, we now well know that the greatest and only demonstrated physical danger of the elevated PG&E wires is where high winds cause the lines to fail and the transformers to short out. It is probable that the thousands of Californians who have died as a result. In addition, in addition, the PUC estimates undergrounding in urban areas costs three to six times what it does in rural areas. The total cost of the undergrounding in Emeryville is not est, is not estimated for good reason. It will be in the millions of dollars. The PUC says Emeryville has only about $700,000 left in its allocation. Millions more will have to come from ratepayers and Hollis Street and its sidewalks and will be severely torn up, all for beautification. Before deciding this issue, the council should be provided with the League's, um, 1019 resolution, perhaps a synopsis of the discussion if available, and an estimation of what the full cost of the Emeryville project is and how much the ratepayers would have to come up with."
Thank you. Um, I wanted to remind people that if you are not speaking, please have your microphone on mute. Here, we were getting a little bit of noise in the background.
And I'm checking out to see whether... No, I haven't received any other comments.
Okay. With that, I will call to close the public hearing, and it's 7:45. All right, uh, let's go to member, uh, discussion, and again, we'll starting with you, Member Donahue.
Well, Greg provided me a resolution of the League of Cities, uh, calling on the California Utilities Commission to amend Rule 20A, to add projects in very high fire hazard severity zones, and to list of eligibility criteria, and to increase funding allocations for Rule 20A projects. And, uh, I think, uh, I would like to continue this and to focus the issue a little bit further. I mean, it is an ethical issue about California and California's real budget problems and our fire hazards as a state. So, you know, the City of Berkeley seemed to feel that, uh, that money should go to perhaps a higher, better safety use. And, uh, so I think we ought to look at that, and I, I suggest we continue this.
Okay, thank you. Member Medina?
Uh, yeah, I disagree with the assertion that this is merely for beautification. We are in an earthquake zone, uh, and I think the haywire simulation shows our fire danger also we live as close to some known fire danger areas. Uh, I, I disagree with the comments here, and I generally disagree with the League of Cities. So, I'm not, not taking that super seriously, to be honest.
Okay. Thank you, Member Medina. Um, I don't think Mr. Bouters has any comments, uh, but I'll give him a chance anyways. Mr. Bouters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I really appreciate Mr. Harper and all the work he has done for our city, but I could not possibly disagree with him or Councilmember Donahue more right now. Uh, this is absolutely a safety issue for the City of Emeryville. I appreciate, uh, Mr. Roberts and staff for, um, bringing this to our attention. The only item I regret is that we lost some money before we took this step. Um, the, the reality is, as Councilmember Medina noted, is we are in an earthquake zone, and above-ground utilities like that pose a threat to, um, public safety and also to the continuity of services, um, in, in the immediate aftermath of an earthquake. I'd also point that, um, point out that our fire station that has components of our EOC is located along this corridor. And nothing about the action that's being asked of us from staff today is to actually form an assessment district where we would actually take money from anybody. Uh, the reason the City of Berkeley, uh, made proposed changes to Rule 20A at the League of Cities last year is because the Berkeley Hills, um, are along a fire zone. So, um, I don't know that we need to, um, deprioritize their issue or, or take any position on their issue. Uh, but the reality is that it would be negligent on the part of us as council members, I believe, to forego protecting a resource we have earned, um, through the work credit allocation program that's currently in place for the future use of this, um, for infrastructure needs. So I, I know that Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Medina has yet to go, as you do as well, Mr. Mayor, but I will place on the table a motion to approve this resolution.
Okay, well, let's get to Vice Mayor Martinez's thoughts first.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think this is just a, a small administrative step, and, you know, I, I hate to see us lose any more money, although I'm glad it was only $4,500 of that close to a million dollars that we banked. Um, and, you know, when I looked into, um, the issue of what was the controversial step towards uh, making, creating an assessment back in 2011, I, I need to recall that the discussion was around safety and not around beautification. So, I'm, um, willing to support this, and I will second, uh, Member Bouters' motion.
Well, since I have a motion and a second, I won't spend too much time on this item, but I will say I generally agree with what the other council members have said. And for that, uh, city clerk, I have a motion from Member Bouters in a second. Vice Mayor Martinez, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, that brings us to our action items. The first action item up is 12.1, a resolution of the City of Emeryville approving a vision, a revision to our business license tax, fire inspection fee, uh, and cabaret license. So, uh, staff report, please.
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this is Chad Smalley, economic development and housing manager. Uh, good evening. Uh, here to present to you, uh, some proposed amendments to our business license, fire inspection fee rebate program. I'll give, uh, Sherry a few moments to load the presentation.
You should be seeing it now.
Great, thank you, Sherry. Yes, got it. Uh, thank you, and if you could go to the next slide, please. Uh, so by way of background, this program, um, was established right around the same time the city was developing its economic development strategy. Um, was actually adopted before the strategy was finalized in February of 2017. And, um, what it does is it is targeted to small independent retailers and restaurants, and provides a rebate of their business license, uh, tax that's paid annually, as well as fire inspection fees that... tax that's paid annually, as well as fire inspection fees that typically are paid annually as well. In October 2017, the economic development strategy was adopted, and as these discussions were occurring at the same time, one of the action items in that strategy is to provide cost relief for targeted industries and sites. It was that policy basis that further supported the rebate program. Since that time, through the beginning of this calendar year, over 31,000 has been rebated to the eligible businesses under this program. And as discussions have continued with the EDAC and with the business community about implementation actions for the economic development strategy, in January 2020, the EDAC discussed, after subcommittee input, an incentive framework, a very simple document attached to the staff report that laid out how to implement the strategy with regards to the specific topic of business incentive programs. And the top priority that came out back in January was to, was sort of low-hanging fruit, to expand the rebate program to cabaret licenses fees and sidewalk sign permit fees. The reason being is that these were two areas that were identified as pain points for those same cohort of businesses that are already served by the business license rebate program. So then, that incentive framework informed the EDAC's priorities for the calendar year, and in March, before all of this calamity occurred, those priorities were presented to the City Council. Next slide, please, Sherry? We've got to go the other, the other direction. Thank you. So, a little bit more background. Cabaret licenses are required by the municipal code for any event or place that has live entertainment, pretty broadly defined. They, the licenses expire on December 1st annually, regardless of when you apply for them, and the fee currently is fifteen hundred dollars, fifteen sixty-five. And in this year, we expected or did issue licenses for up to six businesses. Two of those businesses are already eligible for the business license rebate as existing, for just restaurants and retailers with 12 or fewer locations, independents. If the eligibility under that program were expanded to include bars, that would put one additional business that typically has held a cabaret license in the past, the Bank Club, into this program and make them eligible for both rebate of cabaret licenses as well as business license tax and fire inspection fees. The staff knows that through conversations with various businesses that the costs of these licenses have disincentivized businesses for applying for them. In particular, for a business who just wants to throw maybe one or two events a year or infrequently, it's, you know, almost sixteen hundred dollars sometimes just doesn't pencil for them because they don't always expect the events to bring that much more in revenue. Next slide, please. Sidewalk sign permits, much less expensive, but they're required for any sign that goes in the right of way. So anytime you see one of those sandwich board signs up in front, and these are typically used by small, independent businesses to help announce that they're there and that they're open. And the reason we have this program is that these signs need to be evaluated, that, you know, that they are temporary, that they're not, you know, affixed to the ground, that they don't damage the sidewalk, and that there's clearance around them that we maintain ADA accessibility requirements. These permits, too, expire annually, and the initial fee for these is two hundred and seven dollars, and then if a business already has one and they want to renew it for the following year, it's another hundred and thirty-eight dollars. In that sense, in terms of order of magnitude, this fee is very similar to the fire inspection fee, and that it's something that small businesses encounter annually. In the past, five businesses that have had these types of permits would be eligible under our business license tax rebate program anyway, and it is believed that the rebate, offering a rebate of these permit fees could enhance compliance with this requirement. Oftentimes, it's believed that possibly some of these signs are being placed without benefit of permit, and it could induce some demand. It could, it could cause some businesses to look into this. I've had conversations with a few businesses that have said, hey, I'd really like a sandwich sign, you know, just to let people know I'm here. My storefront isn't very visible. Would this be a problem to put this out while I'm open? And then we say, well, yes, for two hundred dollars, you know, and another hundred and forty dollars a year, and then it's sort of, again, becomes this cost-benefit calculation that for the businesses isn't always optimal. Next slide, please. So, before I get into the fiscal impact, it's important to note, this, this conversation around the expansion of the rebate program obviously started before the COVID-19 pandemic, and in fact, was slated for EDAC's review of these specific changes at their March meeting, which was canceled due to the, you know, rapid deployment of the shelter-in-place orders. We, staff believes that this pandemic and the shelter-in-place orders only enhance the need for these rebates expansion, in particular for cabaret licenses, because they, those that have applied for and received those licenses now can't benefit from them at all, at least during shelter-in-place order, because many of them are closed. And so we, rather than delay this item for the next EDAC meeting, we felt prudent to continue moving forward and bringing this to the City Council now. So to get to what this means in terms of fiscal impact, the existing program, and I want to point out an error in the staff report that was provided, there's approximately 68 eligible businesses. I missed four of them when putting together that compilation. And the proposed revisions, and I mentioned many cabaret license holders are bars. Currently, bars are not an eligible independent, you know, restaurant or retailer. And so if we revise the program to bring those folks in, three additional businesses will be added to what's current, who are currently eligible. And if you look at the maximums that folks can obtain, it would be about forty-six thousand seven hundred dollars in business license rebates. The highest utilization this program has ever seen on a calendar year basis was last year for sixteen thousand dollars. We do believe utilization will be higher this year, in part due to the pandemic and due also to the increased outreach we're doing around this program. Thus far, we've already issued over seventy-two hundred dollars worth of rebates for business licenses, but still trending below, not everybody who's eligible for this takes advantage of it. The fire inspection fee is more rarely used. It's never seen more than a thousand dollars in any year, and that's owing in part to the fact that they're relatively small fees, and in some businesses don't have, in their analysis of the cost benefit of applying for this, despite the process being very easy, elect not participate. If we add cabaret licenses, the existing licenses would represent about forty-five hundred dollars worth of additional rebates, and if we assume that potentially two additional businesses pursue such license, that would go to seventy-five hundred. For sidewalk signs, with the historical trends, we would expect, with existing permits that are out there, about seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of those rebates, and perhaps it induces four additional to pursue these permits, and that would bring that total to thirteen fifty. Next slide, please. So if we summarize this, under what we currently issue already, using the maximum utilization of business tax and fire inspection, existing cabaret licenses, existing sidewalk sign permits, we would expect somewhere over twenty-two thousand dollars worth of rebates to be issued. With increased utilization of the program and the inducement of demand for some of these rebates, we would see something more like thirty-four thousand, three fifty, that's the staff's best estimate of what it would be. And the fiscal '20 and '21 budget already includes forty thousand dollars per year specifically for rebates. So, the summary is that the existing program budget and support adding these businesses and these permit types to the rebate program, and so staff is recommending we do so at this time and start issuing those rebates for 2020. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation. I am happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chad. That was wonderful. We'll go in order. Member Donahue, any clarifying questions?
No, that was very clear.
Member Medina, any clarifying questions?
None.
Member Bouders?
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I'll keep that trend going and not ask any questions. We'll open this now up to public comments. Sherry, has anybody commented on this item?
No, they have not.
Okay, we'll come back around for discussion. Member Donahue?
Uh, I think there are small businesses that are going to come out of our pandemic are really just going to need all the help they can get, and we're just going to lose too many if we don't be careful, and I think we should pass this.
Thank you, Member Donahue. I'm going to be coming back to you to make a motion on this item at the end, given that you sit on the EDAC committee and this came from them. So with that, I will go to Member Medina?
I strongly support this item. I want to thank Councilmember Bouders for bringing up the cabaret license aspect in particular, and for Chad Smalley's excellent work engaging with our local business community throughout this crisis. I think this was a timely and excellent thing to do.
Excellent. Thank you. Member Bouders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo my prior colleague's comments. I want to thank staff and Chad in particular, and the EDAC for their work in expanding this to, as Councilmember Medina noted, cover cabaret in particular. That, to me, is a net multiplier for the city, so even though we're waiving or rebating, I should say, a fee, what we're getting in return is live entertainment that brings more people into these establishments, which is good for the health of the city's economy overall. So I support.
Okay, I'll come back around to you for the second on this. Vice Mayor, comments?
I don't have anything to add, but I look forward to voting out comments.
I want to thank my fellow council members, Member Donahue, Member Bouders for this item. I want to thank the EDAC Committee. I want to thank Mr. Smiley for his excellent work, and for all the other staff that I know helped out on this. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Member Donahue, for a motion.
I move approval of 12.1.
And Member Bouders, I'm looking for a second.
Yeah, I'll take a second to that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Great, we have a mo, we have a first and a second. Sherry, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, that brings us to 12.2 on the agenda, the update on the Doyle Street temporary traffic closures. And who is presenting? Is this going to be Ms. Willam?
Yes, Sherry, Sherry, have you opened the line for Mary Grace?
Yes, I believe I did accept her into the call.
Got her on text. She says she's on the phone. Is she in the room, Sherry?
She is.
All right, she says she's online and on the phone, so I'm not sure what the technical difficulty is. I can jump in and try to address this if, Sherry, if you can put the PowerPoint back up.
Are you seeing it?
Yep, I got it. So, as the council will recall, there had been a previous discussion about modifying some of our streets. We had been talking about that at the Public Works and Transportation Committee in terms of, as you'll recall, in the CIP, the Village Greens project. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the public health officer's orders regarding social distancing and the need for additional space in Emeryville for people to get outside and recreate, and please move to the next slide, Sherry. Staff moved forward with assessing an opportunity that had been raised by Councilmember Medina and Councilmember Bouders with regard to essentially connecting the greenway. So, that is, as you know, a popular corridor. It's been used, it was being used before this change was made by many people, particularly in the evenings after work. Next slide, Sherry? Actually, I'm sorry, if you can go back to the last one, it's probably better. So, staff, traffic engineers, senior civil engineer, Ryan O'Connell particularly.
Please move to the next slide, Sherry.
Oops.
Oh, somebody's, somebody needs to mute.
Are we okay? So what you'll see on this is essentially, these are water barriers, water K-rails, water-filled K-rails that were installed on, basically down the middle of Doyle, from 59th all the way through Ocean. The block between, the first and last blocks are closed off, I'm sorry, the block in the middle of Doyle Street Park is closed, and the Ocean Avenue block is closed. The other blocks have one lane of vehicle traffic going one way, and the other lane is for bicycles and pedestrians. This has enabled folks to get out in a safer method than perhaps I would suggest we've seen in other locations, with essentially a protected bike and pedway shared, and then a single lane for vehicles. So no resident, residents or business has been completely closed off from access. Access has been maintained. The Fire Department also participated in the analysis, and they have access for emergency vehicles, and everything seems to have worked relatively well. In terms of feedback that we've received from the public, there were some initial questions, but I think as you get into your council discussion, several council members have been out and heard feedback from the public, which seems to be overwhelmingly pleased at the change. Next slide, Sherry, and then the one after that. So here we go. We did this by way of a temporary event permit. Notices were provided to all the businesses. The Public Works Director herself went out and hand-delivered the notices to the residences.
It worked relatively well. In terms of feedback, would you please...
We posted information on the city website. We placed the no parking signage on Friday the 17th. I gave the City Council information by way of an email, and then the installation of the barriers followed the following Monday. So this has been in place since Monday, April 20th, and again, this visual that you can see on the screen in front of you gives you a good sense of how the street is barricaded off, and crossings are still allowed for certain driveways. I believe that's it.
Excellent. Thank you. We will take public comment first, and then we'll do questions and comments on this, which is simply an informational item. So, Sherry, has there been any public comments on this item?
I have not received any comments.
Okay. Member Donahue, comments, questions?
Uh, well, I received an email from a property owner, and I went and looked at his issue and saw that, in fact, his concern was being addressed behind his building. Delivery trucks were servicing the building okay, so to me, it just seems great. I walked on it and ridden my bike, and it seems very usable and a good thing to have in this kind of environment where people are getting sick of being cooped up. We need space.
Thank you, Member Donahue. Member Medina?
Yeah, thank you so much for that presentation. I think it was extremely helpful. Sorry, are we... Sorry, are we on questions or comments now?
We're doing both together since this is just informational.
Okay. I want to thank city staff for moving on this so quickly and coming up with, I think, a plan that is extremely safe and got a lot of community enthusiasm. I've heard a lot of positive things about it. I want to relay that at BPAC last night, the members were overwhelmingly, extremely enthusiastic. They felt that this really reflects the plan they've seen for the city and is moving towards a more pedestrian and bike-oriented vision of how Emeryville can be and encouraging people to make the best use of our public spaces. Their only ask was to pass a motion to encourage to do this to more streets because of the announcement that our sidewalks are too narrow for appropriate social distancing.
Thank you. Member Bouters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would concur with Councilmembers Donahue and Medina. I would like to thank Mary Grace Houlihan. I'd like to thank Christine Daniel. And I'd like to thank Ryan O'Connell for all their hard work in getting this off the ground and working with Councilmember Medina and I on the ideas for how to do this well. A lot of cities have put a ton of miles out and said, we're going to do all this. And they haven't done it yet, I know. They're doing it in phases. And some folks ask why one street. And I think, you know, as Councilmember Medina alluded to, this is consistent with the long-term vision of our bike ped plan and how we pedestrianize and de-autocentricize streets. And Doyle Street is the number one priority for that, for the community, to create that connectivity lastingly. And so I think this is an unusual silver lining to the COVID crisis because it's giving the community a chance to see what it could really be like to have a full pedestrian throughway and bike throughway through the middle of this neighborhood, connecting existing separated paths that we have. So I'm just grateful to the staff. I have one small question, which is I've noticed, I've been using it almost daily, and I've noticed that it appears like in several places, people are either pushing them or they're like curving them out. There's like little like faint U's, U shapes being created from the driving side as if like people would be backing out or something. I just couldn't, I'll look if that's a radius issue that people are doing that or are they just trying to widen the car side of the street? Maybe someone on staff could give me a perception on what that might be about.
Mary Grace, are you back now?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, both the maintenance supervisor and myself were out there today and straightened things out. To be quite honest, I feel it was probably kids pushing things around. There was one area where we have been contacted by the organization for, or the management company for the apartments that asked if we could keep the area a little bit wider of a turn to allow the garbage truck to enter. And we have accommodated that. But the rest of it appeared to be possibly kids messing around with it. So maintenance is monitoring and will be straightening periodically. We did straighten it and placed signage that had been removed today.
Thank you. And that is the best type of mischief, so I'm totally okay with that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Member Bouters. Vice Mayor?
I'll just join in with my colleagues on thanking staff for moving very quickly and creating a really usable plan that I would like to see more of. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. I will say I have seen this firsthand. I have utilized that extra space. I appreciate it. Much needed, Mary Grace. I want to thank you for joining in. And I understand the difficulties of getting to these meetings. And thank the city manager for jumping in so quickly. And with that, we will move on to the next item, which is 13.3, Discussion on Requesting Additional Protocols and Protections for Essential Businesses Providing Retail Services.
I think, Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, I think that's the item that, well, I know it's the item that I wanted to bring back. Yeah, and I was just going to ask if Sherry could put the draft letter on the screen. So as context for my colleagues, we all agree that we wanted to see some additional protections for essential workers in grocery and retail drugstores who are doing very important work with sometimes less than ideal circumstances, both related to their work environment, but also as it relates to their own personal health and safety and protective equipment. I had a series of meetings. I did conversations with employees at those types of establishments around Emeryville over the last few weeks, as well as parts of West Oakland. And I had conversations with organized leaders for food care workers to talk about what were the challenges and whether or not the things I had taken notes on were consistent with their experience. The biggest thing that came away, we took away from the conversation, was that there is not consistency in how some of the guidelines that the health officer has proposed. This letter wasn't in the packet originally at the time of publication because at the time that the staff needed to republish last week, the health officers announced that there would be new guidance the following day. So we decided to withhold publishing this letter at that time simply to see if any of these items would be addressed. Subsequent to that, we did additional review of the new guidance. And while there are a lot of things that could be made better, what you have in front of you is a draft letter that's directed to the interim health officer and the five members of the county board of supervisors. And in consultation with the city attorney, it was recommended, because there is interest from council members in other cities, to sign on to a broader letter, this letter as a broader statement from cities within Alameda County, that we could do one of two things tonight. We could either, we could do this as an official city letter from the city council and also do it as a letter where we sign on as individual council members and then make it available to other councils to sign on as individual members. And we could do both of those letters if we wanted to do both approaches. The content of the letter, for those who may not be able to read it who are watching at home, I won't read the whole thing. It is, well, it's not available online. But essentially, the letter asks, thanks to the health department and the board for its work on protecting employees, and it asks for three updates to the guidance. The first is to require employers to provide proper face masks to employees. So the current regulations simply say employees have to wear them, but it is silent as to who has the obligation to provide masks. In my conversations with organized leaders, as well as with individual employees throughout our city and this area, I found that different, based on your income status, you have a different type of mask. So some people are wearing literally handkerchiefs. Other people have N95 masks. Other people have surgical masks. And it's not clear what's the best protection. And I don't think that burden should be placed on the employee to come to work with equipment. We wouldn't do that for other things. So the recommendation is to ensure that the guidance is provided to employers as to what an acceptable mask is and to require employers to provide them to employees. The second recommendation in this proposed letter would require employers to make managers responsible for the enforcement of the social distancing protocols. So I have seen personally on two separate occasions, once at the Target and once at the West Oakland Community Market where I shop, that people who are in critical positions, a cashier in one case and the front door manager who's enforcing face masks, these were people between the ages of 17 and 22, and they were tasked with enforcing face mask and social distancing protocols. And they both received verbal harassment, intimidation, foul language. And there's no training that can, I can ascertain from speaking to people. There's no training being done of these employees as to what the health order says, how to properly enforce it, what is required versus suggested. And to put the onus on entry-level employees at grocery and retail drugstores to enforce these protocols when they do not have this training is not appropriate. And so it should either be one of two things. There should either be full training provided to these employees or there should be managers who are actually responsible for implementing the social distancing protocols. I have recommended the latter take place to avoid having employees who are minimum wage earners in most of these cases be subjected to verbal harassment, many of whom don't get benefits, but are experiencing anxiety and other stress as a result of this task. The last item, Mr. Mayor, in this letter is related to testing. So it's not been common, thankfully, in Emeryville. We've not registered in the 10 or above category for anyone testing positive. We are at the lowest jurisdiction on that front. But if an employee did test positive at one of these stores where there is a high turnover of people coming in and out, there is no protocol currently in place to provide for the wellness of the employee. So the recommendation here is that the store should be closed for a minimum period of hours. 12 is what's recommended by the organized advocates for these groups. So that's what I've included here. I didn't invent that number. And that the county, if they identify an employee who has tested positive, anybody who is an employee that was exposed to that employee or worked alongside them should be provided free testing, which is now available in this county anyways. But the employee, while either having to wait the results of the test or self-quarantine at home, should be continuing to get paid by the employer because it is not, it's not appropriate to take away someone's pay if they're being required to shelter at home in pursuit of good testing protocols. So the letter asks for those three things to be made as part of an update to the county's guidance. And pending the public comment and the discussion, Mr. Mayor, we could, with the city attorney's guidance, we could either do one, the other, or both of a letter from the city and then an open letter that council members sign so that other members from other councils could sign as well. Thanks for humor in that long presentation.
Thank you. So clarifying questions? We'll start with Member Donahue.
Everything about it seems reasonable. Is the, do you think the guidelines for our county are sufficiently defined that, say, for example, when it comes to providing a face mask, that it would be defined, what is the proper face mask for, let's say, a grocery store worker?
That's one of the issues, is that the face masks are broadly defined because they recognize there aren't enough highly, of higher quality personal protective equipment, and they don't want people competing for it in the public, right, or perhaps just going out for a walk as opposed to a hospital worker or a grocery store worker. So the issue is that the burden still remains in most cases. There's no onus on an employer of one of these businesses. It was noted that grocery stores have seen a 73% increase in profits as a result of basically working full-time all the time from having people coming in. And so even if there is an increased cost to an employer for covering masks, it shouldn't fall to the employee to have to determine what an appropriate mask is and put themselves at risk being in a place where there's high levels of contact with many people from the public. So the order, I think, could specify that for grocery store workers or for retail drugstore workers, these are the appropriate masks and the employer must provide it. And that's what this letter is recommending. It wouldn't apply to the public generally, but it would apply to these workers.
Yeah, and it seems like, would you, why wouldn't you say, say, N95 mask? It seems like that should be the mask.
Yeah, and rather than us propose what it is, we can defer to the health department, I think, on that. But we think that there should be some standards. And maybe even it's several options so that employers don't feel trapped in a market that they can't purchase a mask in. But there should be some guidance and it should take the onus off the employees, what we're proposing.
Okay, yeah, that's okay. Like that, they could do that.
Okay. Thank you. Member Medina, any clarifying questions?
Nope.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
No questions.
Okay, and I have no questions, so we'll now open it up to public comments. Sherry, any comments on this?
No, there are no comments on this item.
Great, all right, thank you. With that, we'll come back for discussion. You mentioned the city attorney might have some advice. Did you want to weigh in, Michael?
Good evening, Mayor. You know, this, one of the, one of the things that the council may decide to do is direct that this letter be prepared for signature by the entire council. If that's one thing that the, if that's what the city council would like to do. Or, so that is an option that's available to you, as Councilmember Bouters has stated.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm in support of doing the two-pronged approach and doing both a formal letter from the council as a whole and then also additionally signing on. Member Bouters, I'll throw it back to you for discussion and then we'll go through the regular order.
Mr. Mayor, I would support whatever the council prefers. Thank you. I support the letter, so I will do whichever, either or both. So if you support both, I will support both.
Great, all right. Member Donahue?
Yeah, supporting both is, seems sensible. We could get some, little bit of surrounding city interest and maybe that would really make a difference.
Okay. Okay, Member Medina?
I concur. I support either or both.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I'm happy to support both.
Okay. With that, I'll go back to the city attorney. Would you like us just to give direction here or would you like a formal vote?
If you could give us direction, because this is listed as an item to, for discussion. So if you can give us direction, that would be preferable. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we've heard from everybody that we want to go down both paths. And so if you prepare a letter for us to sign as a council and then individually sign, and I think everybody's comfortable if Member Bouters works on this. Is that, is, if we could speak up, otherwise I'm going to move on.
I think that's.
With that?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, so you and the city attorney will work on the formal one for all of us. And then for the one that would be made available to others with the council's and your approval, I'll simply add everybody's individual names as council members of the city to this, and then I'll share it with the other cities that may be interested.
Yeah, and I don't know if you heard my call waiting go off, but Mayor Schaaf was calling while we were having this discussion, so I will mention it to her as well this evening when I call her back. So I think that's a great action. So I think that brings us to 13.1, the Department Head Report. And just as a note here, as we go, the Planning Directive Report, Member Bouters is recused from 13.1A, and so he will not comment on that item, but just listen in. And so, Mr. Bryant, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Mayor Patton, members of the city council, this is my monthly report on recent actions by the planning commission. Their last meeting was on April 23rd, almost two weeks ago. They had five items on their agenda, as listed here. I would note that six commissioners were present. Vice Chair Thompson had an excused absence. And we also had our new commissioner, Erica Mendez, who was sworn in at the beginning of the meeting by the city clerk. With that, I will briefly discuss the first item, which I believe Councilmember Bouters needs to recuse on.
Yeah. I just.
Here I am, walking away.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So the first item was a study session on the Biomed, Emeryville Center of Innovation, as they call it, which is built out of the Novartis portion of the Chiron PUD by Biomed. This was a very lengthy, robust discussion. It went on for about three hours. And the main focus of the discussion was on parking structure that is proposed on Horton Street. And that concludes my report on the study session. And was there any comments or questions?
I have comments.
That's it? Oh, go ahead, please.
I mean, I looked at the graphic for, I looked at the graphic for the garage and it's just, you know, maybe it's not developed architecturally, but you know, you have an unbelievably beautiful garage to the north. You know, a wonderfully designed architect garage. I can't think of a more attractive garage than the existing garage. And then this thing looks like it's been hit with an ugly stick. I mean, you know, it's just, maybe they're just getting to. I mean, you know, it's just, maybe they're just getting to the skid sides of it. They're not really doing any architecture there yet. Is that an architectural submission, or is that just a representation that is not anything other than a placeholder?
I would not characterize it as a placeholder. That is the design that they are proposing at this time.
Mayor, if I may, this is Michael. So one thing I would like to remind the council of is that when this item is brought for final approvals, or I'm sorry, when this item is approved by the Planning Commission, the city council will sit as an appellate body to any decision that's made by the city councils, or by the Planning Commission. So the city council will act as a appellate body, decisions made by the Planning Commission when this item gets its land use approval. So I'd just like to remind the city council of their role when they're considering this report out.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing none. Member Bowers, would you please walk back to the virtual items? Come back. And, Mr. Bryant, we can do 13.1E.
All right. Thank you. Well, I'll do B through E. There were four public hearings, as listed here on the Planning Commission's agenda. First three of them are appealable to the city council, and the appeal deadline is 15 days from the commission meeting, which is this coming Friday. Of course, if the council wishes to appeal any of these three items to yourselves, this would be the time to do that. The first one is the Adeline Springs project at Adeline West MacArthur. This is a 29-unit project that was approved in 2018 by the Planning Commission, and it was up for an extension of its approval, which the commission unanimously approved. That extension now is to March of 2021. I would note that this is the last possible extension, so that if they don't file an application for a building permit by next March, then the planning entitlements for this project will expire. Next was the Public Market Master Sign Program, which the commission approved unanimously. And then there was a floor area ratio increase for a building at 1375 55th Street, also known as the Pickleworks Building. The commission also approved that unanimously. And then finally, the commission held a public hearing on proposed amendments to the planning regulations for bird-safe building standards, which they also passed unanimously and recommended adoption of those amendments by the city council. And we have scheduled that for a first reading of that ordinance at your June 2nd meeting. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Okay. Member Donahue, any questions or items you wish to appeal? Oh, I know, that's, I'm glad. Member Medina, any questions or items you wish to appeal?
No.
Member Bowers?
Hi, Charlie. Sir, I have a question. Just need to know, I didn't get a chance to watch this meeting. On item C, the Public Master Sign Program, did it include lit signs above a second story?
No, it was really for tenant signage, signage of, not above the second story.
Wayfinding signs and ground signs, but not lit signs?
Not wayfinding signs, just storefront signs.
Storefront signs. Were there any lit signs?
Yeah, I believe there were some that were to be illuminated, but we had a...
Okay. If they're not on the sides of the building, they're like, I just, what's the height of the highest lit sign, is my only question? How about that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just don't have the application in front of me, but as I recall, it was no higher than the height of the storefront. Not, this did not include signs up sides of the buildings, just the storefront signs.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
No questions or comments.
Great. I don't have any either, so that brings us to future, let me try that again. That brings us to future agenda item requests from council members. Member Donahue, any future agenda items?
No.
Member Medina?
No.
Member Bowers?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Medina and I have been working on an item together that we would like to ask the council to give staff direction to work with us on, to bring back at the first meeting in June. So the issue is related to our small businesses, and in particular, the food establishments, restaurants, and food hall vendors, where we are seeing a dismal future for them in reopening with limited scope of where, how many people can be in this space. And unlike our great work on the residential protections we put in place, we have this temporary eviction moratorium through the end of June, but there are no additional protections related to, for example, repayment plans that extend to any of these, this type of business beyond that. And what we'd like to do is work with the city attorney and Chad to examine what might be the best way to provide relief and present an ordinance potentially on June 2nd that would provide additional commercial lease protections for restaurant and food-serving businesses.
Okay. Member Donahue, do you support this idea? And Vice Mayor?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. And Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Okay. And since I have something similar, which I will now not be bringing up, you have unanimous support for this.
Thank you.
Any other items? Member Bowers?
Oh, I'm sorry, not for me, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Martinez?
No, thank you.
Okay. And since my only agenda item request was going to be very similar to the one that's being discussed, I have nothing. And so for that, we are adjourned at 8:30 ETM.